Mr. Kim, on your line.
Okay, we'll call a meeting. The order looks like we do have a forum. I guess Mr. Nicol will join us later if he's coming. The attorney is here and four representatives from District 1, 3, 2, and 4. So we'll call it the order and we have approval of the agenda then I'll read that opening statement.
Mr. Chairman, for old business, I'd like to talk about Wilderness Crossing again. Do we need to add that as an agenda item?
Yep.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda with one change and that is that we make Wilderness Crossing one agenda item for discussion.
So can we, before anybody seconds, let me ask a question. Can we time limit that? How much do you think we need to talk?
Well, I've got some information I want to present.
Okay, cool. Well, can we do it in 30 minutes or less?
Oh, I mean, I can. Take me, take me.
Is that acceptable to everybody?
Somewhere.
Right, so second.
Second.
Yes, we probably move to second that we will accept the agenda with that one item, the Wilderness Shores and Old Business as A.
Wilderness Crossing.
Wilderness Crossing, not Wilderness Shores. I said Crossing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, character unanimously. While this meeting is being held in person, the meeting in its entirety will be streamed on the county's livestream YouTube channel, available at HTTPS, semicolon forward slash forward slash www.youtube.com/c/OrangeCountyVirginia. Limited in-person seating is available. At this present, we have 20 seats available. What I just announced is on the county's website if you didn't catch it. Approval of the minutes of October 21st meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Nickle, for approving that presentation.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll say that.
Let's move to second. We approved the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Public comment is open. Is anyone here for the public comment? Anybody want to sign up for a public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Mr. Eric and Mr. Lansing and Mr. Gillespie, a question was posed to me about public comment. If somebody zooms in, can they do their public comment if they're requested by Zoom?
Yeah, that's permissible.
That's permissible, okay. So that is permissible. If you're listening, that you can zoom into our meeting and have your public comment. You just need to let us know in advance so we'll know what to accept when it comes in so I T people will be prepared.
And I'll just add, I can't speak for I T, so I don't know whether it's technologically permissible, but I know it's legally permissible when we do it in a lot of other counties.
Got that part? It's legal? I'm pretty sure we're technically able to do it. We just need to advance those because they actually do it when we're all psyched there too. There are no public hearings that I know of, is it? Okay, there's no work session? New business? We have any new business? All right, we had old businesses and we're going to do a little crossing. And Mr. Capello, you have the floor.
Okay. I'm going to take my mask off for this. I brought some visuals. Handout. Luckily, let's see. More letters now ahead of time. One, two, three, four. Okay, I think that'll work.
All right.
And I wanted to hear it.
Okay. I will note that Mr. Nicol did intend to be here, but he had indicated to me by text that he was on his way. He could be a few minutes late.
Okay.
So I think he should arrive from the terrace.
All right.
That'll be from Mr. Nicol. Do you have an answer?
Oh, sorry.
Oh. That's what was missed. I'll tell you what you can do. I got one for the county here.
That's all right.
Okay, so where to start? So I guess this starts with P E C and also Walmart and also some questions I've gotten from the community. So the P E C sent some material out. There are some known mine sites on Wilderness Crossing property. And so I started doing some digging into it. I got a report done in 1980, done by a guy named Palmer Sweet, which is a fairly old report. And also, I got some information from D E Q. And then I followed up with D M M E, which is now the Virginia Department of Energy. And so what I'm going to present here is, I've got my sources here of how I derived this. Everything here I did, just so you know, I made the map. And so I just want to talk about the mines. I think there's some significant issues here that the county needs to be aware of. I don't know if the landowners are aware or not. I don't know who's aware, but like I said, I've spoken to both D M M E and D E Q and both said that this is worth raising and it causes some concern and some things that I think we need to pay attention to. So let me start with the first page here. So this is a topo map off of Google and I've drawn in as best I could the outline of the Wilderness Crossing property. And I took the longitude and latitude off of some reports here that I'll go through and I plotted the mine sites. There are basically one, two, three, four, five mine sites that are on this particular property. Melville is one that D M M E doesn't have a record of. Valcluse is a pretty extensive mine. More gold was mined that than anywhere else in the state of Virginia. You've got Greenwood, Wilderness, and Woodville, which is actually on both sides of Route 3. So that's the first map. So these are fairly accurate locations. My understanding is that these may have been cited with a handheld GPS. There's coordinates in the Palmer Sweet document that's done in U T M. And I actually meant to bring that, I forgot, but it's a really old document. I converted the U T M coordinates first and plotted them. And then when I got the second reports from D M M E, I replotted them and I noticed the locations had shifted slightly. So I think the ones in the latest D M M E reports are the most pertinent. On the second page, oh, by the way, I've just laid out where the streams are. Like this is Shotgun Branch, this is Wilderness Run, and this is the Rapidan River. This yellow, these waterways are considered impaired. And what that means is they've not met a limit, a water standard limit. And it doesn't matter which one, but anytime they don't meet a water standard limit, the stream is impaired. The Rapidan River is impaired because of mercury and fish tissue. And that's right here on this page. This is the D E Q 2020 impaired waters 303D list. And you can see right here the Rapidan River, fish consumption, mercury in fish tissue, and it failed the, it's above the limit, the recommended limit. And so that's about a nine mile second section of the Rapidan. There's a number of mines north of here also. There's a lot of mines up in this area in orange. This Valcluse mine, however, is a significant mine. The Wilderness Run, the data, it's not in this impaired waters report, but I did find online that this is impaired because of bacteria, that it's too high of a bacteria count. But this Rapidan River, this is impaired because of mercury. And that's important to note because gold mining used mercury. That's how they, mercury was used to dissolve basically the gold out of the rock material. And then they would heat it and they would vaporize the mercury. The gold, not in a pure form, would come out and they'd recollect the vapor and then reuse the mercury. There really isn't any naturally occurring mercury in Virginia. So the extent that there's mercury issues, it's something that was brought in. So definitely the Rapidan River here and beyond this is considered impaired because of mercury. And like I said, right here, this is the line that shows that and the, on the 303D list of D E Q.
So I just want to ask you a question. What does RSA say about Rapidan River and it being impaired? Because they pretty much own that river.
Yeah.
I don't mean it in the sense of it's kind of like.
I talked with D E Q about it and so, you know, RSA treats the water. And so they were able to test it and treat it. And I don't know where they take the water from. This is from 2020. So, you know, I don't know what RSA.
And it has pretty much a free running river. It's real fluid.
They've got a pipe stand all the way from Madison to that.
Yeah, yeah. And so I would assume if RSA found mercury in the water, they probably have a way of treating it. I mean, it's a metal. It's a heavy metal and there's ways to treat the water to get the mercury out. So then what follows here, these are the abandoned mine reports from D M M E. Now, this, the Palmer Sweet something, the Palmer Sweet report is something you can just search online and find very quickly. These I had to actually contact D M M E. I gave them the mine sites and they sent these to me. And I got to be honest, I was a little shocked because it's been, it's been kind of brought up a little bit here and there, like I've heard people talking about it. They came up with Walmart, but Walmart, this site didn't actually have mines on the site. This actually has mines on the site. And so this is just, these are portions of these reports. I just, they're, some of the pages don't have anything on them. But I just want to read a couple of things about the Valcluse mine. And I've got it highlighted here. And let me just point out that it's not just the mercury, but it's also that there are actually open mine shafts on this property and there are horizontal drifts underneath the ground. And I'll tell you what I mean here. So this is, again, this is D M M E's language. This isn't mine. Safety hazards exist due to the existence of vertical shafts and pits. Environmental harm severe due to mercury contamination of the stream sediments. Investigate inclusion in the superfund cleanup. So that's the Valcluse mine. So they recommended it be investigated for inclusion in the superfund cleanup. It says right here, new classification is made due to the fact that extremely acidic drainage is present. So let me just, again, that's this mine right here, the Valcluse mine, right in the center of the property. It sits on a little knoll here and then these tributaries run down Shotgun Branch, which runs all the way through here. And again, this mine here, Melville, that hasn't really been looked at. D M M E doesn't really have a record of that. It goes on. Several mining companies are studying the site. This is Valcluse. A permit to mine was requested of the county, I assume that's Orange County, in June of 1988. The county will not allow mining due to public concerns. So back then, the county knew that this was an issue and they weren't going to issue an additional mining permit. The Valcluse shaft was 220 feet deep with levels at 50 feet, 110 feet, and 201 feet. The 110 foot level contained 275 feet of workings. So that's basically horizontal. Underneath the ground, there's 275 feet of shafts at the 110 foot level. At the 201 foot level, it had 876 feet of drifts and crosscuts. So that's almost 1,000 feet of, okay.
Good.
That's almost 1,000 feet of, that's almost, sorry, a little distracted here. So that's almost 1,000 feet of horizontal shafts underneath the ground. It goes on to say unsafe conditions exist and are severe due to the extent of the shaft and workings. Mercury is a hazardous waste found at the site.
So do they, based on this information, they know where that mine starts and where it stops?
Well, they know where the shaft openings are. And I inquired about this. There is no map of the horizontal workings. My understanding is this was taken from records that they had, that they kept at the mines, that kept track of how much horizontal shafts there are.
They can do some type of aerial imaging to determine.
And also they do some, do some ground probing too, to see where the density leaves the ground, for lack of a better word. Where the ground is not dense anymore, it would be hollow, I mean.
Yeah, well, let me go through this and I've got some questions and we can talk about those, okay? Potential for groundwater contamination severe. Potential for surface water contamination severe. Acid mine drainage. Environmental notes. Extreme mercury contamination from the sediment of the Tailings Pond. Likely groundwater contamination from the use of mercury in the mining process. Large array of underground workings. Mine hazard severe. Toxic chemicals, mercury. Okay, so that's Valcluse. That's the, I've got that one first. That is the one of the biggest concern, as far as I'm concerned. And I'll get to my concerns here at the end. And Mr. Chairman, it will be way less than 30 minutes. The next mine site is Greenwood. Greenwood is this one right here. Okay, Greenwood, there's not a lot of information on. But the environmental notes are high potential for mercury contamination due to amalgamation. So that's a second mine site. This one that hasn't been identified, but it's a high potential. So this one hasn't been investigated. The Valcluse obviously has. We move on to Wilderness. Fatal fall hazards exist due to the open shafts and influx of population to the area. Recommend the elimination of shafts. This was interesting. There was some illegal use and there was illegal dumping into the shafts by the hunt club.
What? What would they dump?
They didn't say. Trash, I think. Open concrete shafts, 100 feet in depth, fatal fall hazards. And you've got Woodville, which says potential groundwater contamination moderate, trash in pits. No hazard materials noticed, but also not ruled out. So, you know. And the interesting thing about Greenwood is houses appear to be on wells on the roadside presently. So this is an issue that's present as well. I mean, so that's that. And then the last thing is the Melville and all I have is this description. This is the Palmer Sweet report right here. So I think the Valcluse mine in particular is of concern. I have some questions that I think we should consider. And then I'll be done and I'll just be curious to hear everyone else's.
Well, hold up one of your questions.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions or comments based on what Mr. Capello showed already? And then Josh and Eric, well, Eric?
Josh stepped up.
Josh stepped up for a minute, okay. And I guess the, just so we can have and catch you up, Mr. Nicol, we added this to the agenda.
Okay.
Wilderness Crossing for this particular presentation. And we limited it to 30 minutes to have a conversation about this. And Jason has given his presentation of what he has found. Nothing against Mr. Capello. We'll note that this is his investigation of what we found. And this is where, and he puts his sources out there where he got it from so that we can do our own research, except his, and/or for anybody that's listening or attending can make a note of what he's done. We do have one of these copies for the record so that somebody can know, they will look at. And if you got any questions or comments or anyone at this point, I want what we've gone over, that's fine before we get to his questions.
Yeah, one quick note, I mean, these are not my words.
I didn't say they were. I said this is your investigation.
Yeah, but I mean, this is actual, this is, this is.
On stage, on stage. And we've got it. We've got those. I'm not alleging that they're your words. I'm just clearing the air for Mr. Nicol to catch up.
No worries.
All right, now you can ask your question.
Yeah, so I just have a string of questions. So could construction activity cause increased runoff? An additional waterway, mercury, acid contamination? Could dust created during construction be contaminated with mercury? Should horizontal shaft slash drift subsidence be a concern during construction activities? By the way, subsidence is the ceiling of the horizontal shaft collapses and the ground falls. So if you're running heavy equipment over these horizontal shafts, I mean, is that something that should be of concern? Same question if you build a house over these shafts. Over time, is there some issue? Is there an issue with the mercury and the high acidic levels in having homes nearby? And then the final on that is, you know, what about open spaces? I mean, open spaces for people to be frolicking and walking. I know if I were a young, George, we talked about some of the crazy stuff a little earlier when we were kids. If I were a young person walking through those woods, I guarantee I'd be in that mine shaft 100%.
So what I would suggest we do as a commissioner, if I can kind of pave the way for us, is that all these questions that you have.
Yep.
Let's see if we can give them to both staff and the applicant and see if we can get some answers to them because they're relevant to what you present there. And if, if they want to argue against the genuine energy, then let them do that, you know? But I would ask that your questions be submitted to both the applicant and the county. Reason for the county, just to be able to know what they should be asking, that this information be given to the applicant, everybody, and then see what they say to determine where we are because all those are the same questions I think any commissioner would have. Not anything that's out there outlandish. I don't see why we would even have to rehash it around. Presentation has been made and if anybody has some questions they want to add to the ones he had, I'll say have any else, or Mr. Gillespie, a no.
I would have a third recommendation that we elevate this evaluation to the county administrator and the members of the board supervisors. A S A P.
And if I could, I just want to give just a couple more minutes. I have three other questions. You know, is the, I'm curious if the landowners, I know they're aware of the mines, but are they aware of the records? You know, the state records related to them? I have a question. Who's responsible for the cleanup? That's a question that, you know, that is hard to answer. Is it federal, is it state, is it county, or the landowner? And then has the landowner already considered some mitigation, maybe to have? The last thing I'll say is, like I said, I've been in contact with D E Q. You know, they have some concerns. D M M E has some concerns. There are state grant funds available to try to deal with this mine stuff. And I also think that independent of this development, I mean, this is something that is potentially impairing the Rapidan presently. There are wells in the area presently. I feel like even independent of this development, it's something that might warrant a little more investigation. So I'll end on that. And I'll also say it's a little ironic that it's mines again, George.
So I can add a little bit to this based on past personal experience. Normally in banking, when you do commercial projects, you do have a, you get a, what is called a land remediation, something else, report that you can get from the state working control. As most of you know, that, or they use this area, there's a retention bond behind the gemmetal products that contains heavy metals and all kinds of other junk from utilization of that plant in the past. And how I know that is I was involved in potential financing of that at one point and it's still past the state's authorization to be not a contaminated enough project that we couldn't deny the approval of the loan based on that fact alone, had the other reasons. So my point I'm trying to make is, your information, I'm not questioning accuracy of the state or you. The point is, it may be to the point that it is not
a concern.
A concern of theirs at this point. The one that you did outline that says it has the potential for a superfund does bother me because that is pretty high element in terms of contamination. So I appreciate what you did. I mean, sincerely. And I do think the county, if it makes a superfund, there's some money out there to do that on the federal level. But if it's not out there to that level, then there is some personal liability of the landowner involved in the reclamation process.
Well, that's a lot of work. I really appreciate what you did there. And also I think that a lot of people had that question when we went to the open house that they had with the community. People asked that question and may have not really gotten an answer. So I think, you know, opening this up for discussion is a really good thing. I think people were really concerned about mercury in their water.
What did they say? So I wasn't.
There was a person that stood up and asked specifically about environmental studies or, I can't quote it exactly, but.
What was the response though, is what I'm curious. What did the owners say or the presenters?
I think, I think they said they heard them. I think they were, they were listening. I don't know if there was really a response.
I agree with that. That's pretty much.
They brought up specifically, I was there as well, this is part of serving on the commission, but they brought up specifically that there were gold mines. They may have brought up mercury. I can't recall if that was brought up, but they said, you know, this, there are numerous gold mines in the development area that is outlined by their materials and by what you put together. But there was no, we looked at it, we solved it, we dealt with it. There was nothing like that. It was just a comment made.
Yeah, so.
I remember a little bit more than that. There was a little comment about groundwater contamination.
That's right.
And the applicant's response was that they were not intending to use the groundwater for irrigation or potable water.
That's, that's, yes, I do remember that.
So I guess my question would be, it's probably just from a common observation, really often on TV you'll see where somebody was sitting at the intersection and boom, the car got lost in the ground and the ground ran away. In California, I think they had almost a whole neighborhood that just slid somewhere, you know? You would have to ask, with 275 feet open mines based on this report, that's a whole lot of, I mean, 100, two, what?
Thousand feet.
Thousand feet of open mines. I mean, it's a lot of under the ground, maybe 110 feet down, but at some point something's got to hold something. And will it give, you know, what's, what's this? I think that's a good question. So I go back to what I said. Anybody that has a question, get it to Josh and Josh, take Jason's questions and let's pass this on to the applicant. And I would ask the county to do some due diligence on what's the liability to any extent as we look at this application. And Jason, thank you for what you brought in and we'll have to go through it. I think until we get some good answers from somebody, quote unquote, we may even have to ask the vision of mines or whoever those folks are to come here to our meeting and give us a slight presentation on, okay, if this is true, then what? And see where it goes from there. Not saying that it's not true, I'm just saying, let's, let's, let's get some expertise in here. We can beat it around all night about, oh, it's going to fall and be terrible, but until we get some expertise, let's get it.
No, I agree. And I think that regardless of what we find out, I kind of am under the opinion that there may be issues.
There's issues.
Well, there may be some. Well, there may be some conditions just to, just to kind of force the, at least the investigation and, you know, the determination of whether this is an issue or not. And, you know, when I talk with DPQ, they talked about a couple, you know, they can do some, you know, phase one and phase two analysis. He said this would get picked up immediately in the first phase.
Well, in 1990, 1832, when it was first mined, took back to 1935, I thought they had the engineers and the capability that they have now to say what, when it went in that mine, how safe it was.
Yeah.
Because I'm beginning to see what I'm saying. So when you look at the safety aspect to say 1832, I bet you, you know, there's gold in it, I will try to get it. It was there in theory and it was there in 10, 1935. You have some goals and everything, two by four at the entrance. If you got a market mine and who owns it or something, you know? So I think we can look at this. Josh, on your experience, was your expertise in the planning comments?
Well, as it relates to conditions, what Mr. Gillespie referred to might be a condition related to a geotechnical engineering investigation, geotechnical study at some point that could be done prior to site plan. It doesn't have to be done at the zoning stage. Essentially, you're trying to get a site characterization and identify what the feature, the location of the features, the extent of the features and their character. So.
Advocate has got to know this.
And the extent of the mercury. I mean, if it's going to be open space, I mean, I would want to, I'd want some, some indication that that's not going to end up being land that gets turned over to the county, for instance, for a park.
Or, I mean, I don't want that, but somebody's, somebody don't want it.
Well, I'm just saying.
I don't want it to be anybody's land. I mean, I don't, I know because Virginia is a bi- and big wet state, you could get it, you know, by a, by a pig and poke. I mean, that's, we don't want that either. So I do think.
Chairman, I have two questions for staff. Just was in the applicant, in the application from the applicant, was there any, anything related to mines? Did they mention them? Did they, was there anything in, in the current application? I don't recall anything.
I don't recall even a passing mention of the history, that historical use being, that there was a historical use being, that there was mining. It certainly wasn't featured or highlighted or identified as an issue of concern to which they were proposing certain measures to remediate or overcome them. But again, I don't, I don't remember any, even a passing mention of the historical use.
Right. I don't, I don't recall anything in the materials. And also there was no identification of this. So they've got all kinds of things identified in here, everything from the historic program church to, you know, the strings and tributaries, but there was no identification of the location of the mines in any of their documents.
They got it now.
Well, I know that.
I'm not going to speak.
And then it sort of begs a couple of questions, like one, is this why they didn't put any reservoirs in? Did they know this and not put the reservoirs in because of this issue? So you wonder, I don't know the answer to that. It just begs that question. And, and it's certainly, you know, depending on the location, if the housing units are either on or, you know, physically on, if it's in open space, I have concerns about that. But if it's, if there's a house, it's going to be there, I have concerns about that as well. So thanks for bringing this forward. Mr. Capella, appreciate it. And I think you have some very valid questions and I think there are a number of questions that we need to have answered.
The Parkway called Gold Mine Parkway?
Yes.
It is called Gold Mine Parkway.
I think that was an odd to the history. I believe they brought that up.
It could be, maybe, but I, yeah. And they have a gold mine central, so, and a gold mine preserve, so.
Yeah, I would honestly say that is very, I would say that the applicant is aware of the mines. To what extent? I don't know.
I don't know yet.
And the reason I know that, you cannot know much about that area and not know about the mining. I mean, it's just, it's a whole bunch of folklore, ghosts and just different things that was there, you know, and people had found that never returned back home and it's open to mine and, you know, it's just a lot. Being from my family, being from that area, you hear a lot of that. So I know the mines are aware. Now, whether they put in the emphasis on the application, that's where the county comes into play. And I think, Mr. Lancing, is there anything you need to add to it for my legal statement?
Uh, no.
Okay. So I think the task at hand is you've got this information, you got, you have his questions, which will be all of our questions. And then make sure the applicant understands that we need some, and we may want to, Josh, I'll leave it to your best judgment, but we may want, based on what Mr. Capella has showed us, we may want the division of mines or the energy, whoever that can come in and say, okay, we either deem them safe or not safe. I just don't know how you can have 500 feet, 110 feet below the ground, never taken care of, a safe spot to put a house on the top of a road to put on the top. I just don't know how you do that.
Yeah.
I just don't know how that is a logical thought.
It just occurred to me, I have another question, and that is, this rezoning application has a number of parcels that are being combined into essentially a planned, planned development, mixed use. Can we identify which of the parcels that correspond with these mines? Because I think that's very relevant to this rezoning case. So in other words.
Got you.
You know where I'm headed.
Be specific. Josh, he wants us to be specific where the houses are going based on the open space so that it does not have a relative impact on it.
Not even that. I'm, I'm talking about in advance of that. They have said in, in their, in their map, they said, we are combining 20 parcels. I believe it's 20.
That's right.
So what I want to know is which parcels have a mine on them? So is it, is it a 10 acre parcel, a 400 acre parcel?
Exactly what I meant to say. So he's just looking for the, so we know what, we may approve it, I guess is where you're going, to say on particular parcels, here's the condition, you cannot or you can because.
I mean, it may deter, yeah, there could be a, you know, they may have.
If parcel one B has 2,000 feet of underground mines, you would say in that parcel, we must not build homes, we not make roads. That must be open space and it has to be noted to the public that if it's used for trails, that there's a potential high risk danger there.
Yeah, I guess, Josh, I don't know if you've answered this question. I know with a past experience personally, we had a piece of property that had an abandoned well and we wanted to build something not too far from it. So we had to fill that well in completely and make sure it was not susceptible to problem where anybody else at a later date. I assume that's the same applicable thing with mines.
Well, right. I mean, it's a subsidence issue. You're trying to prevent subsidence. So one of the practices that's, I'm not an environmental remediation specialist, so I'm not, don't take what I'm about to say to be more than somebody with passing knowledge, but bentonite is used. And so bentonite is a concrete or cementitious product that's injected liquid into the ground. And so bentonite is often the structurally stabilizing material that goes in and forms a matrix. So that's one way to fill and get in subsidence.
It's not acceptable to put wood down in a well because wood will rot. So it, I'm just using an example.
Sure.
Because then it will deteriorate and go away and get in it. It's acceptable to put something that won't deteriorate such as a concrete or something.
Right. And of course, as, you know, engineers and road builders would know, I mean, you have unengineered fill and engineered fill. And so if it's, if it's just filled full of something, it's not necessarily engineered fill. And so it's susceptible to future subsidence and sinkholes and the things that you're running into.
But the other thing I was wondering is if Jason and I down there on a midnight tour looked through those mines. You want to go?
I mean, when I was younger.
All right, folks. Jackson, good job. We thank you for what you presented. County knows their, their task, commissioners. That was a nice one to put in there. Which that's settled to the best that we can settle it. We will move on to reports. Mr. Johnson told me he would not be here. Josh, you got reports for us?
I do. So after your last meeting, of course, you entered your first meeting in October, it was referred to the board that zoning text amendment 2102 to amend the definition of accessory apartment would be, was ultimately recommended for approval and was approved by the board supervisors on October 28th. So that is now the law of Orange County. Just so you know, without amendment, without change, that was adopted.
Good work. I think we're good, so that's good work.
Within the department, we have, I'm proud to say, we now have two certified zoning officers. The first of those is Davis Smith. He's our code enforcement program manager. You all, you know Davis? Davis took the exam recently. And Susan Crosby is formerly, had been a certified zoning officer and she has been reinstated recently. So we have reinstated Susan. So pleased to have that.
Nice.
Uh, credential in the, in the folks. You had asked about hires and I am pleased to announce that we have two pending offers, offers out for the two planning positions. And we have, expecting to be making an offer at the senior planning position as well. So we'll see some new faces. We'll start working on cases and doing research and able to answer some of these questions when we run them down. So it's not just always Mr. Gillespie decided to do it. So I'm pleased to have them joining our team, becoming into our building. A lot of things going on right now.
Now, are you going to require them to come to our meetings? And the only reason I ask that question is because while they're trying to get their feet on the ground, if they can understand the flavor of the commissioners, it might make their job a little bit easier as, as they look at it. Sometimes having, being appointed to something, you really don't know who, what the criteria is, they think is good work, but they know that's not the, that culture that they're building. Just so, let me sum it up the other way. I would strongly suggest as they come on that they attend a couple, three meetings, whether they have to go to all of them, I don't say that. But each one should attend a couple, three meetings to, to understand the way the commissioners go. And it's likewise with the board supervisors. Because the planners are real crucial to what's coming here.
Absolutely. So as I.
I'm not going to tell them how to do their job, but there's a lot of opinion in jobs and they understand and they might write it, their work where I can understand it. So you can look at it and say, well, Mr. Brooks always asks this dumb question. So they can always have that answer for that dumb question. I just don't, I mean, commissioners, which I'll find, because we're having, we're having a lot of folks on staff and they can go in a lot of different directions if they're not careful.
I think it's good for people to attend a meeting or two, just to know what goes on unless they, I mean, I don't know their experience or anything, but it doesn't, it seems reasonable that they would attend.
I'm just not prepared to put a face with a name like that.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Number one, they'll all be introduced to you inside and outside of meetings. Number two, I'm certainly going to call upon you all as resources for them. So, you know, you will get to know them, they will get to know you. That they will be your staff. That's, that is who they are. They all have experience working with boards and commissions. So, you know, we'll work on delivery and presentation materials and everything that, that you all need to be able to carry out your jobs. But absolutely we'll work on their professional practice and what your expectations are.
Okay.
Lastly, Tracy has prepared and we are bringing to you a kind of draft for discussion for 2022 planning commission meeting scheduled dates. Just a reminder of your bylaws, you have what you consider your, what is called your regular meeting for the first Thursday of each month. And your third meetings of the month are considered to be alternate or as needed. So we have laid these out for next year. And of course, the, the idea every year is to make sure that we don't have a meeting scheduled for July 4th or Christmas Day or something like that, avoid holidays. The way this, the way that you would normally adopt your schedule for the year, and I talked about this when I came in April, is you would adopt basically annual schedule. And normally we would do that. I talked about it in the context of COVID. Mr. Bell talked about it in the context of having two meetings a month. Mr. Brooks talked about it. Chairman Brooks talked about it as to what the second meetings would be used for when they were being held after carryover business as well as education and information sessions that may not be part of the regular business sides of hearings. So just for your information, we've, we're putting this in front of you today. Would love for you to check your calendars for next year. As you get into your organizational meeting in January, it would be in order for you to adopt a calendar of 2022 meeting dates. Again, you may want to recognize that, of course, with your bylaws, that some are regular meetings and some are your as needed meetings, second meetings. So that's, that's just in front of you again, you know, it's presented to you tonight without any, without any kind of a fore, fore information before you arrived here. I don't, I wouldn't expect you to act or resolve anything on this, this evening at all. Like I said, it's appropriate to do the January, the organizational meeting, but I'm not sure you have that today. As we get into the holiday season, November into November.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have three questions for Josh.
Okay. The first. I just wanted to get someone on that list.
Huh? No, no, this is a question.
These are the two big questions.
The first question's a little lighthearted. How happy are you that you've got offers out and you're going to have more staff?
Well, number two, and actually as we, as we introduce these folks, I feel we have some highly motivated, very professional, very capable and some, some, some very solid people that are going to come here. I did not mention, these are folks, not all of them necessarily, again, we have some pending offers, but not, so I don't want to say anything I shouldn't, but these will involve some folks that are coming to the area that are relocations. And so you recruit talent to an area and you recruit folks who are going to be part of this community. They have to be sold on the community and be excited about being here. So just as much as I'm excited about having them here, they're excited about being here.
Send them to Gordon's, Phil, show them a good time.
I already talked about it. You may have a new neighbor.
That's fine. My second question has to do with the road issue with the board. So did they actually pull that from the planning commission? Like that's, we're not under the 100 day clock anymore. Is that correct on that issue?
Related to the roads, the board was the, it was the board initiated application. So as applicant, they have requested that the commission have no further discussion until the board gives a little further direction of where they want to go.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. And then the last question has to do with wilderness crossing. And I just, it's really a two-part question. Did we ever determine what the 100 day date was? First question. Second question, what, what's going on? What's the general status of the, of the issue at this point?
Sure. So there are some, essentially it's been determined that the application has two, two components that are essentially incomplete. One is the proper, as Mr. Nippel pointed out especially, you have received proper conditions as part of this application are incomplete. And so an incomplete application does not have a time clock starting on it.
Okay.
There are also, and it's a little more arcane, but there are components of the traffic impact analysis or TIA that are still lacking essentially. And by lacking, it means that they are also missing. And so it's also incomplete. We are working diligently with the Virginia Department of Transportation and the applicant to have a discussion about resolving the incompleteness of the components for the traffic impact analysis. We're meeting with the next week to go over that with them and the consultant and the applicant. As it relates to the proper conditions, it's really, as Mr. Kane said in his remarks at your work session, it's really upon them to make revision of materials that would respond to the guidance from the board, that would respond to the feedback from the commission, and that would essentially complete those items that were left blind or incomplete.
So I've heard that there's a, they've hired a proper consultant or some sort of consultant and is that consultant having discussions with folks within the county presently?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have, we have been asked for some information. We have provided those pieces of information. I think that they are trying to respond to questions that were asked, but we have not seen any work right yet. So I'm not sure what they're wanting to find.
Are you able to share with the commission the questions that have been asked thus far?
Uh, sure. And they were asking about the number of students being generated and what the comparative files are. And they were asking about the number of students being generated and what the comparative models are, what cost of education might be before individual students in the county, from county share as well as the state and federal, and the cost of constructing a new school facility. So those are the main questions that I've been asked.
Okay. And, okay, so the, the consultants just been speaking with you? Are they also talking with board members? I mean, and I'm not, just if you can't answer some of it, that's fine. I'm just trying to understand what's going on behind the scenes.
I'm not aware of conversations with the board members about those subjects.
Yeah, so in theory, it's coming to you and then you're distributing as needed to get whatever answers.
Got it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And just a follow-up, they haven't provided a timeline on when they anticipate getting back with the complete application.
Yes, that's true.
Yes, so whenever it comes, we'll take a look at it, determine if it's complete, accepted or not, and then care for it.
That, that is correct, okay. The applicant has also proposed that members of the commission who are interested join a tour to Newtown in Williamsburg, that Mr. Nancy held up as a model that was looked at in Joanna's Gardens. And has targeted the date two weeks from today, which is your plan, your, what would be your backup or second planning commission meeting date of the month for that visit.
Do you want to count the second?
Can, that's, that's going to be on a weekday though?
Correct, it's a Thursday.
Can I be addressed to that? I'll just go on a weekend when I'm available to go?
Absolutely, and, and I will tell you, I personally know Newtown very well. I've been around and in and used Newtown. I used to live in Newport News, my wife worked with William &amp; Mary and is a William &amp; Mary graduate. So we know Williamsburg really well, we, we only know New Williamsburg, I'll tell you way more personal information. So I know Newtown very well. If you have any questions about Newtown and how it's changed, part of the story of Newtown is that it has changed in the last couple of years. No place remains the same, even a master planned community will change and evolve over time because it's a living, breathing community. So part of what the story of Newtown is, looking at their initial plans and then, and then visiting the site today and seeing the use of buildings or the lack of use of some buildings for retail, for example. Again, I don't want to get a, dive too deeply into a critique of what Newtown is and isn't. But if you have any questions about Newtown, please feel free to, to call and, and ask. But it's, it's on the outskirts, it's Williamsburg. Yep.
Right off, Roger.
The county, the county gave a tour of Newtown to board members, attorneys, citizens, a bus tour four or five years ago, maybe six to seven, I don't know, back when we first started up at GWAP. And most of us that were involved in went then, they just spaced us out so that it looked like we were happening to leave. And we just talked about everything other than anything specific.
That's right.
They did a real good presentation, brought us in at, at the end and sat us down in one of the event venues there and did a presentation of what they did, so. It was the, I don't know who.
Was it like the developer or was it the county government?
The county government and the developer and some of, Julia Joint, I think, didn't force. County administrator back, Mr. Brian David, and we all went. When we were just beginning to look at GWAP, what to do and what could happen there and what should happen with the county. And it showed that some things that were interesting, like, I never heard of this until I got there, how they wanted to use parking spaces during the day, it was used for retail. At a certain time of night, the person who lived there used the same parking space to keep pavement over so much parking space. Just little different ideas I never even thought to is that, you know, if, if you go to New York City, if you notice, a lot of people live above the retail, they had some of that above living. It was, it was a mix of a lot of different things that certainly knew the Orange County, was certainly knew to me, now.
You have that in Gordy'sville.
You do, you do. And you have Jason in Gordy'sville. I mean, but you, you certainly do, you have a lot of those things that actually happened. It's, if, if materializes, I wouldn't even tell you anybody who has not gone to go. You, you'll kind of get a visual of what you're trying to put into paper or get off the paper or glean from paper. Is it perfect? Nope. Is it nice? Yep. I'll just leave it at that. It really is, I mean, the hotel we visited, very well. A bus got around it, that's, I was impressed that you could take a tour bus and get around a whole lot of problems.
So, so who's, who's doing it, who's going, what's the?
So this is the applicant's tour and in part Newtown because their land planning firm has an office in Newtown. And so they can speak from the perspective of their, their land planning firm, or land planning principals. And they can speak as, from the perspective of someone who's a user and a resident occupant of Newtown. The intent again is to expose the commission members and board members. If board members want to go this time around, but I think most of them, other than Mr. Marshall, were on board at the time, to be able to, to see it with the, with the intent of looking at it as a model place. We've talked about a couple of other model places too, and Mrs. Almakers asked about those. And so I would, I will, I will give some coordinate locations for other places that are models. And we talked, I think we talked here about the living mill community and living mill development outside Richmond. That's a good model, really an exemplary model in central Virginia. In Newport News, not too far from Allen Road from Newtown, there's Port Warwick and Tech Center, which is an interesting project.
I thought the one we went to in.
Probably went to Oyster Point.
Was, was City Center East?
Yeah, City.
There's City Center, City Center, Oyster Point. I believe you visited that. City Center is another interesting project. Port Warwick is essentially right across the road, hard from there.
I think we ended up in Newtown, that was going for Walker. That was, well, I, I would just say that if the applicant is going to do it, they need to kind of follow the precedent that was set at the last tour, just to go down there and get it. And just here, here, look at this, it's not there. That kind of took us along the route to say this is, because there was some undeveloped properties that were there. They're probably developed now because it's good lower, that's been, that had to be, what, George? Five, six years ago?
It'd be interesting to talk with James Seaton to know what proffers were, were offered. I mean, I'm more interested, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, developers can build something nice. And I've said that over and over again. I'd like to talk with the.
That land mostly till my age here, when I finished there in seventy, was just farmland and wooded area.
Yeah.
Mainly. And really had no concept of future development per se. Until then came along.
No, I would send back to the applicant, there is an interest. The interest would be that it be coordinated properly. The interest would be, we don't want to just be taken from the applicant's side if they can coordinate with you to get somebody from maybe that planning department to even show us that their application maybe, if that's, I'm sure it's public record, they can see their application, to see what proffers will put in. The proffers may be different now because, because the law has changed on proffers in that timeframe till now. So you may not, cannot use it, but you can see what they're offering.
Yeah.
You know, there, there, it's never illegal for somebody to say, I'll give you this. You can't say, give me that. But it's never illegal for them to give you something, I mean, so there it is. All right, any other questions on that?
Thank you, Josh. Yeah, I just, listen, I have one more credit. In terms of building and permits and renovations, is that still pretty rapid?
We, yes, I've reported that we're at the higher, you know, the highest levels in four years. That's maintained constant, constant, I think in November, December through October. I think in November, December, we'll see the season will slow down, that happens every year in the winter. Sometimes you see site planning or planning applications pick up over the winter. Essentially the off-season for construction and then you'll see the destruction pick up in the spring. We have a lot of interesting things going on in the national housing market right now. We have national home builders that are holding back from bringing the product to market. We have folks who are crying out for product and it's an interesting moment. But yes, we're still at the highest levels of four years in recent months.
We're pretty much up to date in terms of the backlog for, you know, processing things in a timely manner?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner comments, District Five?
Yeah, just two, two comments. One, I have two children, they went to William &amp; Mary, so I am familiar with Newtown. And spent, I've spent.
So you said you have some investments down there?
I have, the investments are over, now they're, now it's a return on investment. And they're doing quite well, so thank, thank you for that. It's, I'm glad that part's over with. So, so I am familiar with Newtown, I, I agree, it's a, a great development. If, depending on the timing, if I cannot go, I just want to publicly state that has nothing to do with the applicant or my feelings about this project. It's simply a, I work full-time and it's a schedule issue. So I don't want my absence if that is the case, that anything other than I can't make it. But I am familiar and I would certainly review any materials that they provided and would welcome actually seeing those materials. So I, I just want to say that for the public record. And then, since we're on Wilderness Crossing, I'll say one, one other thing. I think, you know, I appreciate the, the process we've gone through. I think there's been a lot of, this is exactly what you should do with a thirty or forty-year development. And, and to, we've all stated, and I think even the applicant stated, that they want to do it right and want to develop this in the interest, best interests of Orange County and the citizens. So I, I certainly support that. I didn't get a chance last meeting to, to talk about the view shed that the supervisors brought up, but I want to state very emphatically, I've heard from a number of people almost on a daily basis about that view shed down Route Three is being preserved, Route Three being preserved and Gold Mine Parkway, notwithstanding the gold mine issue, being the, the main artery where the development can center itself around. And I think they're going to have to make some significant changes in order to accomplish that. Because right now, their plan is a complete wipe of all those trees. And I have a significant problem with that and with the fact that this is violating the, the buffer that's been put in place with GWAP. So thank you all, appreciate and look forward to continuing to work this and, and having a successful process.
District Four?
I don't have anything additional to add to that.
District Two?
I, also, Mr. Chairman, do not have any other comment?
District One?
Good to go.
District Three's got two comments. One, in case anybody's wondering, Donald Brooks will finish out his term as I was appointed for District Three. After that, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I am not getting off the commission. I am going to finish my term and I'm going to work as hard as I did before. So that should put all the requiring minds to rest. The second thing that we have is that, that I have is that I've asked Josh to put on the applications when they get to us, completed or not completed when they're given to us. That then will establish when the clock starts or does not start. Does everybody follow what I'm saying? So when we got the Wilderness Crossing, there was no indication of complete or incomplete. He, I've asked him to have his checklist and when it gets to us, it'll be a complete application. We can work on something and I want us to know ahead of time as much as we can for things. But to get rid of this clock and this dates and things and, and being a controversy, the real controversy that I picked out of this, and Mr. Lancy, you can help me, is that whether the application is complete or not complete. So when it's complete and we have a hearing on it and all based on the county's rule, whether it's a work session or not, the clock starts. If it's not complete, the clock does not start. So the, the way we should receive them is either complete or incomplete. Then that should eliminate a lot of the controversy or the confusion when the clock starts. The other thing that I've asked Mr. Gillespie to do is to come up with a formal policy or procedure of how the applicant is notified, the clock has started or the clock hasn't started. So these things will make us far more professional, not that we're not, but we're going to put everything in a rigid format so we don't have to have this, I don't believe this, oh no, we got to start here. I think that's going to lead to law, correct, Mr. Lancy?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
And sometimes we just got to do a little housekeeping to make it work, to make it work for everybody. That way we will know. Now, when that application comes with that cover sheet, it should say on it, as of this date, this application is complete, here is the end date and the timeline. Unless the applicant says, I want more time, that's their privilege. If that timeline is put on that face sheet, we will have to wonder. Anybody willing to speak up on this? I'm just trying to play chair of persons.
That's a great idea.
Huh?
I said, I think it's a great idea.
I'm just thinking, just, I, I'm, everywhere I've ever worked at, even now, I'm at my people, what, what has this been doing? What's the criteria for it? What have, have they, what do I have to have to them when? Checklist never hurt anyone. And I think it would help us all, and also will help the applicant, and also we can put it on calendars. This is, this is another, we can do, we got twelve days fixed this, so we can't sit here going around beating the wheel as there. If we can get all that done, I think that will help us to be successful in the future. And I think it will help the oncoming staff to know where we stand.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to make sure we're crystal clear, because I know there was an article in the paper.
It is, I read it.
And I read that article. And certainly the, the news after our meeting changed. But it, I, I also want, when we reviewed the application and it was, it was, the surprise was not on the applicant. The applicant did not have a complete application. So I, I just want the public to understand, this is not a surprise to the applicant. They, they have blanks in their application.
That's right.
They had highlighted portions that said, we're going to submit.
Right, and my, my thing with this is, Mr. Nickel, is to twist it a little bit away from that particular application and put something in form in place for all applications.
I love that.
Because then, then we will have that issue. And if you, I used to tell folks, and I still tell folks, we shouldn't talk about people when you're talking about hiring, we should talk about the position. So instead of talking about the applicant, let's talk about our procedure and our policy and make it be that way and then it's universal for everybody. We learned something, everyone of us learned something.
I just want to make the point that the surprise was on us, that the determination, and that was a complete.
And I'm trying to eliminate that surprise in the future by this type of procedure.
And it may have been the first or second meeting that I ever attended where I said, there are blanks here. I've never considered that to be complete.
Right, but I, I, I want us though to get away from, at this point in my comment, that's why I didn't do it, do Wilderness Crossing. I want us to be more of, this is our procedure, not after an applicant in general. That application calls us to develop this procedure. But that's all I'm doing is trying to develop or help develop a procedure so that that clarity is there from now on. I would just love, just like I hear, every meeting I come to, they know, I just would like to see the boxes checked.
That does raise a question from a legal standpoint, maybe, Eric. The clause that, that.
The clause, the, the provision in there that they said they had the option to make changes at their discretion at any date in the future. Can we say that's totally unacceptable?
We have, we have. Yeah. I don't, I think we can do that.
Yeah. You can't stop them from saying it. We can ignore it. That doesn't hold us, bind us to anything. That's what I would say. What, any applicant could say, okay, I'll do this for six months and I'm going to stop. If you accept that, you, you locked in. We're, we're saying now, this is not what we're going to do. This, this is the procedure we're going to do and this is how we want to do it. And we're going to do it for every application. That eliminates whatever they say. Cause you can write anything on the paper. There's a lot still that you write. Anything on paper does not move unless you move it.
So Mr. Nancy, if I, if I may also respond to that, I, I think it's appropriate that staff would identify to you in a report that, that's an unenforceable condition.
Yeah, right.
I, I think that's, that, that was my thought process that, uh, it really, to me, as a personal speaking, personally speaking, uh, to me, that would be a deal breaker right off the get-go.
Yeah, you just can't, I was just like, I mean, I think if the intent was, is that they probably were trying to say, I'll come back to the commission and ask for appearance or, but that ain't, that ain't what was written.
Man, I think they're common. These, these are really smart people. They ask for what they want.
I'm in favor of that.
They, they didn't intend anything other than what they put.
But here's what I want us to do at this juncture, since I've gone through the commission of publics and I really want to handle it this way. And because I've, I've talked to several people, and this is the guidance I've got. So give that application for a moment and think about the procedure that I presented. I, I get what everybody is saying. I'm not against it. This is why I think this is the best procedure. Because it will eliminate what we have to do because that, there was a lot of faults in that application.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you're giving any argument. I just, I think Mr. Nickel just wanted on the record publicly.
That it was them.
That the applicant knew it wasn't complete. We didn't just spring this on them. So.
Also, I think there would have been another way around. A hundred days is right on us. So. And I, I like what you're talking about because every applicant plays by the same rules. Every applicant is treated the same.
That's right.
And we have consistency at the commission level. So that we're doing the people's business in a transparent.
And fair opportunity.
Fair way.
That's what, that's what I was after. That's what I'm after.
I think it's an excellent idea, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Man, did something like this with them.
You're pushing it, Jerry.
I was going to say, let's do that for a second. It's been moved improperly that we, during home phase, say, aye? All posts, they're here, we're going. Folks, I hope you all, did y'all come for comment? Cause we're going by comment. Okay. I didn't want you to think I was being rude with you.
Recently bought some property in Orange County.
Oh, there you go. Welcome home.
Let's divide out. Look at screw.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
What's that?
Downtown or uptown?
One of us. Where abouts? Uh, Route Twenty and, uh, the flat branch intersection on the Simnel side.
Okay, okay. Well, welcome aboard. Coming anytime, first, uh, me, uh, first Thursday of every month is when the planning commission board meets on a different day. You know, we're just excited. Cause we talk to the change.
So we're happy. Fly chicken, barbecue, beer and wine.
So where did you, where did you move from? Where'd you move from?
Uh, Prince William.
Oh, I left there too. Keep going. Thank you for coming.
It's all built up.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Folks, thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. That's good work, Phil.
I, I have a woman.
That's good work. I was excited. Now, now you're. Wait, what, what, what's this big? You're gone. It's exciting. So I'm, I'm here at the twenty-five o'clock before, twenty at work, my wife's over.
Congratulations. How horrible on you.